All right, folks, we're going to get started. We have to, we have two meetings tonight, so we need to get moving here. Officially call this meeting to order. We're going to start the evening with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, can I have a motion to approve the minutes from the May 23 meeting, please?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Ramich and seconded by Mr. Resch. Any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, Mr. Skoraki, what do you got up for us tonight?
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming tonight. We have six items for the action meeting on June 20th. And we have just a couple informational items for discussion tonight. So first off, we have our monthly budget transfers for the month of May. They totaled $200,591.63, a small amount compared to our previous months. These transfers are routine in nature to adjust for changes in spending throughout the year and to ensure that we are charging the expense of the proper account code. So again, we're asking for approval, I might say June 20th action meeting, it's June 22nd action meeting, we're asking for placement on that agenda, please.
Can I have a motion? Any questions? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right, next item, we have an item that pertains to our healthcare consortium, also called CPAS. CPAS, per their policy, they asked us to appoint a trustee and an alternate on an annual basis. Right now, I am the trustee and Jenny Schmidt, our coordinator of benefits administration, is the alternate. We're recommending keeping that structure the same, so we would be the two voting representatives to the healthcare consortium. So we're asking for placement for this item on the 22nd action, action agenda as well.
Can I have a motion? Motion by Mrs. Wesley, seconded by Mr. McBane. Any questions? Again, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, next item, we have a very brief update on the general fund budget. Of course, we've been discussing the general fund budget for six months now, and the proposed final budget was approved by the board in May. So just want to highlight where we're at now. We did make a couple changes since the adoption of the proposed final budget. I think the net impact was less than $100,000. So Mr. Linky's going to bring up the presentation. Okay, so to let you know where we're at right now, the slide that's on the screen right now is where we stand if there would be a 0% tax increase. That would leave us with a $9.5 million budget deficit. Again, very close to where we were in May. We made two changes on the revenue side. We increased our investment income by $100,000 and we increased our earned income tax projection by $100,000. And on the expenditure side, we added in a couple additional items. I think one, Mr. Roan spoke about at the last Safe Schools meeting regarding repeater. And we also made some adjustments that were missed on the personnel side with respect to co-curricular positions, extra duty positions. Some additional expenses for the marching nights and two other positions that are now reflected in the budget. Again, other than that, the net impact was less than $100,000. So Mr. Linky, if we go to the next screen. Bob's taking over, okay. Thank you, Bob, for advancing it to the next screen. So the proposed final budget was adopted with a 4.1% Act One index increase, and that does generate an additional $8.3 million in real estate tax revenue, which will leave us then with a remaining deficit, a budget deficit of $1.2 million. The average homestead increase would be $173, that's $14.42 a month. Our final budget has been duly advertised as required by law. It's been published on our website as well. We did have one taxpayer ask for a copy of our PDE 2028 official budget document. So that was good news, that we had one request, at least for that document. But other than that, the final budget is pretty much teed up, ready to go for June 22nd. I will add, I will add that there's been some movement in the Pennsylvania legislature regarding the state's budget. I believe the House is developing a version of their own budget right now that actually would provide additional subsidies to the school district for basic education funding and special ed funding, even more than what Governor Shapiro proposed. But of course, the, that budget that's being proposed by the House would ultimately need to be approved by the Senate. Negotiations will take place, but it doesn't appear likely at this point, at least, that we will have a state budget before June 22nd. If we do, if we were able to get that budget, we would reflect our numbers in basic ed funding and special ed funding before the final budget. And hopefully actually reduce that remaining deficit a little bit more if we do receive additional state funding. Other than that, I really don't have much to add. Again, we've been discussing this for quite a bit of time. I really presented the new information since the last meeting, just three short weeks ago or two and a half weeks ago. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Can I ask a question? So I don't know which meeting it was at, but Mr. Gilmer discussed the projected need for an additional repeater associated with the transportation center and a third location. I forget the exact amount, but it was substantial. Is that going to land in this budget?
Yes, it is reflected in this budget.
It is, it is included. Okay, do you know the amount for that by any chance? And did, did that also reflect the, we talked about an emerg, well, hypothetically, we talked about an emergency response center, but right now, is it, what, three elementary schools? EOC?
No, I don't think it's.
It was hypothetical.
It was hypothetical, yeah.
Okay.
At another location, it was one specific location.
Okay, all right. So do you know what the amount was? For later, Mr. Skoraki?
$68,000.
$68,000, okay, thank you. But we are getting that repeater, the repeaters.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
I'm curious, have you looked, Mr. Skoraki, at what potential increases will look like for our facilities that are in Towah-Menson based on that impending sale to PA Water? I think when I asked originally, it was Next Era, and they were giving us the township a three-year break, essentially. It's not the case for PA Water, they have a flat rate, and they've been discussing metering with residents, so I'm just wondering if any of the impact of their acquisition has either been accounted for or has it even been followed up or investigated on?
Yeah, no, nothing is reflected in this budget. I guess it was about a year ago, we did a little analysis on what the projected rates might look like and what impact that would have on North Penn. I don't remember the exact amount, but I want to say over a period of time, it was like $50-some thousand. So one of the things I actually, I think I mentioned to Mr. Linky a couple of weeks ago that I reflect, I failed to mention when we were doing that analysis, that there's going to be a potential benefit to the school district of the sale of the sewer system that isn't reflected either, and that is the system itself, the infrastructure and so forth, since it's owned by the municipality, is tax exempt right now. So if that sale does go through to a private entity, that whole infrastructure will be, I mean, the buildings and so forth will be taxable. That will come onto our tax rolls. So theoretically, any additional revenue or any additional expense, I should say, that would, we would have to pay for sewer charges would probably be more than offset with the additional real estate revenue that we would generate from the, the real estate portion going from exempt to taxable.
Few questions, Mr. Skoraki. The $173 annual average, which is what, just under $15 a month per homeowner? Could you explain, is that the mid-range? So what's the home value that represents that?
Yes, so that's the, the averaged homestead value. It's about $150,000. Now, that doesn't mean that's the value of the person's home. That's the average assessed value for a homestead. So obviously, if it's a commercial property or if it's a property that has an assessment over $150,000, that figure will be more. If the assessment is less than $150,000, it will be less. $150,000 assessed value equates to a calculated implied fair market value, somewhere around $350,000. So that's the, the average or the median assessed value for a homestead in North Penn School District.
And I do remember, though, I might not have passed the test afterwards. You had a slide explaining that. So, but it's why I had to ask for that reminder, because it's that $350,000. I think it's important for the community to understand, and as it's reported, that, you know, those numbers, when it's $173 annually, for some people to, to realize, that may not be if, if you are much lower or much higher than, say, that $350,000 value for, for your home.
Yep, and to be precise, the $150,000 assessment, I actually had the chart with me, comes out to $379,459 in implied fair market value.
Thanks, I think that's really important when we, when we try to convey these figures. And so we aren't, have we impacted at all where we are in the county in terms of ranking for taxes? Are we still fifth lowest?
I got the slide on that. We're still the fifth lowest. We are 16% below the countywide average. And even with the 4%, 4.1% increase, we will remain in that fifth slot.
And that, that's including, this represents that we're now up to 90% for the tax rebate for, for those who qualify, renters and homeowners as well.
Right, and I'm glad you brought that up. I was going to mention, I think in our next slide, I think I have a slide on the rebate program, but just earlier this week, the, the House passed a bill by a vote of 194 to nine, so overwhelming, to increase the Pennsylvania Property Tax and Rent Rebate Program for next year, which provides additional assistance for homeowners and renters. What we'd do would increase the maximum rebate for seniors from $650 up to $1,000. And this is in sync in line with what Governor Shapiro presented in his budget address when he made that earlier this year. It would also increase the income limit from $35,000 up to $45,000, both for renters and homeowners. Right now, it's a $35,000 threshold for homeowners, and it's a $15,000 cap for renters. So it brings both those maximums up to an equal $45,000. Now, it's important for the board to know, we have that 90% rebate, but our, part of our board resolution, it provides a, a cap, a ceiling on what our rebate is. So that'll be something for the board to consider. If this actually goes through on the Senate side and becomes law, you know, we would have to have a new resolution to increase the maximum because the state's maximums are increasing. Similar to what we did this past year, actually, when there was a 70% one-time bump with the federal stimulus money, we went back and did a second resolution saying that our 75% includes that extra bump. So we'd have to do the same thing here. The 90% would have to include the extra bump that the state will potentially be implementing for the coming year.
I have one more question.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Skoraki. The last question, when we look at the projected budget of roughly $4.5 million deficit, is that roughly in line with the prior year's budget?
So with the tax increase of 4.1%, it actually comes down closer to about $1.4, $1.5 million. So that'll actually be less than what it's been the past couple of years, because we've been around that four to five million dollar figure budget deficit the last couple of years. So now, this year, we'll be starting out with a lower deficit. Still not a balanced budget, we haven't had a balanced budget in quite a number of years, but it'll be the lowest deficit budget that we've had in a number of years.
And we're still on track to close out this year when the audit is done, three years in a row, just in the black then?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I'll talk when we get to the financial reports. I mean, just in the investment income due to the nine Federal Reserve increases over the past year and the real estate transfer tax and the earned income tax, just on those three items alone, our positive revenue variance is going to be about $6 million, just for those three items. Also, you might recall, last year, we passed our budget and then the state passed their budget, and part of the state's budget provided an extra boost in basic ed funding. So when we started out our fiscal year, we already have received, there's about $2.1 million in additional state funding that we didn't budget for. So I think our revenue variance right now, we're looking at a total of about $9 million in positive revenue variances, and we will underspend our budget by quite a bit again this year as well. So we will have a positive variance in the budget, and one of the things we're going to recommend is to use that money, either all or a part of it, to kind of pre-fund the high school project, so it can help us reduce any borrowing, so we don't need to incur any interest expense. So that's our recommendation. Similar to, you know, why we, administration recommended 4.1% to the board, we said it at several meetings, that were it not for the pending high school project, which could range between $240 and $400 million, we would not have recommended a 4.1% tax increase. It could have been much, much lower, because we have had positive variances over the past couple of years, and we do have a pretty healthy fund balance. But we have a high school project facing us, and that's why we did recommend the 4.1%. So any additional surplus that is built up now, our recommendation is going, going to be to use that specifically to reduce the debt that we would need to incur. It'll still go towards the project, but it'll save money because you won't have the interest expense that is associated with it. And in the meantime, we can invest the money, right now, at 5.25% interest rate is what we're receiving.
Thank you so much for the work that you've done and for getting us to the place where that you are making this recommendation for the 4.1% increase. I'm wondering with some of the, I know that there have been some things with the, the state budget being delayed a little. I'm wondering if you're getting a sense from other districts, if they are also going to the Act One index as well. It's, I think sometimes it's so nice for us to look at, looking at the slide that, where it talks about that we're the 16% below the county average, the fifth lowest in the county. Can you give us a snapshot in time right now of other districts within the county and what their, their administrative teams are putting forward?
Yeah, it's, it's pretty much across the board, Mrs. Ramich. We just updated a survey that we do with my colleagues, and we have others that are at the Act One index, we have some that are close to the Act One index. I would say overall, this year, just, I guess, without actually pulling up the spreadsheet, that the countywide average is probably north of 3%. Some are less, some are more, some are closer to the, the full index or at the Act One index. But I think a number of districts have seen, especially those that have approved labor agreements recently, there's upward pressure on labor contracts, and districts are seeing perhaps maybe larger tax increases than normal this year because of inflation, because of labor expenses, because of collective bargaining agreements. Some recent agreements have been pretty, pretty salty compared to prior agreements, and I think that ties into things like labor shortages and, and overall inflation. So I think that's what's driving some of the increases for a lot of the districts in Montgomery County.
Thank you, appreciate that larger context outside of the district. Thank you.
Okay, and then on the slide now is just the history of our tax rebate program. And again, we will need to revisit that resolution should the state pass that proposed legislation about expanding the property tax and rent rebate program. We would certainly love to see it increased, and the program hasn't been updated at all since 2007. And I don't know what inflation has been exactly since 2007, but I would venture to guess that there's been about at, at least a 20% appreciation in overall cost of living since 2007, 16 years ago, and there's been no increase whatsoever to that program. And the, the state has the money and the gaming proceeds to be able to fund this. So I'm hopeful that we do see a, an increase to this. Again, it's really for those individuals that are most vulnerable in our community that need the most economic assistance than others because of the income threshold or because of a disability.
Mr. Skoraki, real quick, the income threshold that they were going to raise it up to, that only includes half of social security, right? So it's $45,000 is the projected or proposed limit?
Yes, only half. Yes, only half of social security is counted towards that maximum household limit, correct.
Okay, thank you. In doing outreach in the community and speaking to our seniors about this, I have met quite a few who are slightly above the current income threshold. So they, they're, they're feeling the pinch, but it's inaccessible just because of a little bit of income that they may have from a pension or a part-time job. And so widening that, that, increasing that to the $45,000 is going to, is going to, I think, I think we'll see opportunities for more outreach there, but I think that's going to meet a real need in our community, so.
Yeah, you make a great point, because we recently sent out letters. We took a look at any individual that received a tax rebate. We're in our, our fifth year now. So we looked at who received a rebate in the first four years that didn't receive a rebate this year, and we did an outreach, we sent letters. And one of the things we're hearing back is, well, I received a rebate in one of the prior years because my income was less than $35,000, household income was less than $35,000. But since then, my household income has gone over $35,000, so I no longer qualify. That's why I didn't apply for the rebate this year. So we're doing one last push in June about the program, and we're hopeful that we could have, we're, depending how many we get in June, we could have a record year in terms of number of individuals that applied this year, which is, has been our goal always to try to, our goal is always to try to get 50% of those eligible to apply for the program. We've never reached that. We haven't come close, quite frankly. I'm hoping this year, we can push it to about 35% of those that are eligible. Still remains a mystery to me where the other 65% are at, but we just can, keep continuing to do that outreach through whatever venue we can, and at some point, we'll hit that 50%, hopefully in the next couple of years.
I think there's a timeline, Cliff, and so I'm wondering if in our outreach, we talk about due dates and we present it, and, because you do have to do things in sequential order, right? So you file your income taxes, then you submit the state rebate, then you do this. So I'm wondering if, I'm, I'm really speaking to Mr. Gilmer right now, how he visualized this in the form of some, some type of presentation, so, anyway.
I just want to let the board know, or the committee know, that, you know, in every community, there's a need for this, for assistance for some. There's vulnerable individuals, vulnerable households in any community. So Lower Mariner School District is considered one of the most affluent school districts and communities in the state. Well, they just implemented this very same program. They replicated the North Penn program, their board just approved this recently. So they have smaller numbers than we do that are eligible in North Penn School District, but they also felt, their board felt the need also to provide some additional assistance for those that need it the most. Again, it's all under the guise of, we've been hearing about property tax relief and reform for, at least in my 30 years in school business, and it's never happened, and it probably won't happen while I'm still in the business. So it's really left to the local officials to provide some level of property tax reform or assistance, and that's really what this program does to those that are, are most needy. And the Pennsylvania Constitution specifically allows for a program like this. It's called out in the Constitution to allow for a program like this at the local level. So, you know, kudos to those school districts and boards that have implemented this, because it's kind of a mini version, a local version of property tax relief.
So, Mr. Skoraki, now that the increase has gone to $45,000 per year, is there any additional outreach to people who may now qualify?
So it hasn't been passed yet, so let me just qualify that. It passed the House, but it still needs to go over to the Senate.
Okay.
So there potentially could be some resistance there because there's a, a different party that controls the Senate, the Pennsylvania State Senate. So if it does increase to $45,000, that's, that's a great question. I think we need to do perhaps another community forum, because you are going to have another layer of eligibility that just wasn't there before. So the last community forum we did, I want to say it was in 2020 or 2021. I know it was during the pandemic because we did it virtually. So I think another community forum could be warranted. We really need to get the assistance of those individuals that have received the check already too. Because in all likelihood, they probably know a neighbor, relative, or friend that is eligible for the program, and maybe somebody that's just over that cusp right now. And say, hey, did you know, you know, North Penn has this program and the state just expanded it? I think the individuals receiving it now can be some of our, our best, you know, promotional individuals with the program. So on the budget, again, we're prepared, ready to go. Advertisements have been in place, we're ready to go for action on June 22nd. Mr. Linky and I are working with our elected tax collectors. We have individual meetings with each of them next week. We're reviewing all the drafts of the tax bills now, and our anticipation is that, that tax bills will be in the mail for July 1st. So we ask that the, the budget with the slight amendments that we made since the proposed final budget be authorized for placement on the June 22nd action meeting, please.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Wesley, seconded by Mrs. Stoll. Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item, we have the 2324 homestead exemption. And this does tie into the budget, because this is something that appears on individuals' tax bills if they have an authorized homestead. An authorized homestead means that the individual made application through the county assessment office, it's their primary residence, it's not used as a business. In North Penn School District, we have almost 24,000 properties that are eligible for the homestead exemption. So we receive gaming money from the state, we in turn take that gaming money and turn it back to the taxpayers that have a homestead, dollar for dollar. So there's no additional revenue for the school district, we just pass that on to those individuals that are eligible for this homestead exclusion. So for the upcoming year, we receive $6.3 million from the state, and there's slightly less than 24,000 properties, and that comes out to $264.52 that will be a deduction from the real estate taxes on an individual's tax bill if they are eligible for the homestead program. And that's about a .39 increase over the homestead amount from last year. So anyone that might be watching tonight's meeting, if you have a homestead, you have a residence that's your primary residence, and you don't see that homestead exclusion on your bill, you need to reach out to the county assessment office, they can provide you the form to apply for it. There's a March 31st deadline each year to apply for the homestead exemption. And we actually sent out a mailing to all those properties that we think could be eligible for the homestead exemption but are currently not enrolled in the program. We send those letters out as required by law by the end of December of each year, notifying the individuals that, hey, you might be eligible, here's the, the one-page application, send it into the county, and you could be eligible for the homestead exemption as well. Now, I believe here in Montgomery County, it operates differently from county to county, but I believe when a residential property is sold, there's an automatic removal of that homestead exclusion, and the new property owner then needs to reapply. So if you are a new homeowner in North Penn School District, I encourage you to apply for the homestead exemption or wait until December. It's too late now for the 2324 year. If you wait until December, you'll get a mailing directly from North Penn School District explaining the program, and it'll have the application. But again, if you're listening, at least you're aware of the program, and you want to make sure you, you get, take advantage of that homestead exclusion.
Thank you for mentioning that, Mr. Skoraki. My son is buying a house tomorrow, and I wasn't sure if the homestead deduction transfers to him or not, so.
Yeah, we've been hearing from a number of individuals that there's been a lot of residential homes that have been sold to investors that then rent out the properties. That property would not be eligible for homestead exclusion because it's being rented for a profit. So I think that's why the county automatically removes the parcel, they just can't assume it's going to be continued to be used for residential purposes as a primary residence. If it's being used as an investment property, it's not eligible. So that's why they automatically remove it by default and then put the onus on the new property owner to, you know, to certify that, yes, this is a homestead, I am eligible for the program moving forward. So that, I think that's their rationale. So worst-case scenario, an individual, depending on when they purchased a property, could miss the homestead exclusion for a one-year period, but then if they apply by March, then they would be eligible for the subsequent fiscal year. Okay, so we, we typically get some last-minute changes from the county with respect to that list. So right now, the amount stands at $264.52, barring any last-minute changes, that will be the amount, but we actually have a board resolution then that we will place on the June 22nd action meeting, so we're asking for placement of that resolution at the action meeting, please.
Can I have a motion?
Second.
Motion by Dr. Lewis Campbell, and seconded by Mrs. Stoll. Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Next up, we have the potential assessment appeals, district-initiated assessment appeals for 2023. Just to give a quick background about our district-initiated assessment appeal process, we do have a board policy that governs this. So we take a look at all the sales activity from the previous year, every transaction. It doesn't matter what type of property, residential, commercial, industrial, vacant land, and then we take a look at what the, the assessed value is, and then we compare the sales price to what the implied market value is for that property. And then when there's a discrepancy of more than $600,000 between the implied market value and the sales price, we put that property on a list for a potential appeal. The reason for that is the property could potentially on a list for a potential appeal. The reason for that is the property could potentially be under assessed. That's what we're looking for. We're looking for under-assessed properties of $600,000 or more. And our rationale for that is for every property that is fairly assessed, they're paying an undue share of taxes for those properties that are under-assessed. So it's been quite a number of years since the countywide reassessment. I don't think there's one on the horizon at all. 1998 was the last countywide reassessment. So in the absence of a countywide reassessment, this is our opportunity, this is our only way that we can get an assessment correct based on current market conditions by filing a district assessment appeal. We have an annual right to file an assessment appeal. It's been upheld by the courts, most recently by the Pennsylvania Supreme Court in the Wilson School District case. That was a case where we filed an amicus brief recently. That decision came down within the past four months, upholding, again, the constitutionality of a school district's ability to file an assessment appeal against under-assessed properties. Property owners also have the ability to file an assessment appeal if they feel their property is over-assessed. And we are involved in a number of cases each year for property owners that feel their properties are over-assessed. Some years, it's 30 properties or more. This year, I did provide a list in executive content. I did not provide it in public at this point in time because it's pre-decisional list at this point in time. It's a list that's currently being vetted by our solicitor to see if there's any special transaction that might occur, maybe special circumstances, might have been part of a portfolio transaction where it's not the true reflection of the sales price, wherever the case might be. We do have a number of properties that are listed right now. We have 29 properties that met the criteria for preliminary identification. Our plan is on June 22 to bring back that final list. It might be smaller than the 29. It won't be larger because these are the only properties that met the criteria of having a discrepancy of $600,000 or more. I do want to point out a couple of parcels that are on that list, though, just to show you the magnitude that we're talking about and the potential tax dollars. There's one parcel that sold in September of 2022. It's a shopping strip located in Montgomery Township. And comparing the sales price to the assessed value, and then coming up with this derived implied market value, there's a $17 million discrepancy in value, meaning that the new property owner paid $17 million more than what they're being taxed on. That's a huge, huge discrepancy, $17 million. So again, for every property that's properly assessed, they are subsidizing a property like this that appears to be under-assessed. So that was the largest difference, $17 million. We also had another property that had a $14 million discrepancy. We had a third property that had a $10 million discrepancy. So that gives you an idea that we're talking about major discrepancies here that could have a huge impact on additional tax revenue, the tune of several hundred thousand dollars a year in tax revenue. And that tax revenue isn't just for one year. That's reoccurring year after year after year. So our goal, again, is not to pick on any property owner or any property type. We think this is fair and equitable, especially for those individuals that are paying their fair share of taxes, because it appears that there are a number of properties that recently sold that are not paying their fair share of taxes and that they are under-assessed.
Mr. Skoraki, is in terms of commercial properties, I'm thinking of a large property in Montgomery Township that we've discussed before that has, I think, was, they believe they were over-assessed because there were less retailers there. What is the status of that property, and how will that impact us?
Yeah, so we have a number of properties that we settled on. You find every board meeting seems to be two or three settlement agreements for real estate taxes. And a number of them were filed by the property owner and for that very reason, especially during COVID. We had a lot of hotels in particular. That saw their occupancy decline dramatically. And businesses, depending on the type of businesses, they can be valued based on the income that's being generated. So hotels is an example, or an office building that's leased. That can be valued not just on the real estate, but on the income that's being produced. Unlike a residential property, that's not being valued based on any income that's being produced. Even if a person is renting out the house, the valuation is not based on the income. It's based on how many square feet, you know, what neighborhood it's in, things of that nature. But commercial properties, if they're income-producing, commercial properties can be valued and appraised and ultimately taxed based on the income they're producing. So there's been a decline, and there's been a number of appeals during COVID because of the property saying, hey, you know, we had retail space, our vacancy rate increased, therefore, our property isn't valued as, or is valued too highly. Same with hotels. We're not having as many people stay in our hotels, therefore, the value should be down. They file appeals. We settle. The assessment gets lowered. So your question is what happens next? So we continue to monitor those properties that actually received a favorable decision in previous years. They remain on our radar, and we revisit them on an annual basis to see if the circumstances have changed, to see if, they call them reverse appeals. A district-initiated appeal is now warranted on those same properties.
Okay, that exactly answered my question.
Long way of answering, but yes, those properties, we revisit them to make sure that, because if we don't revisit them, that lower assessment stays in place forever, even if economic situation improves.
That's what I was wondering. Does the lower assessments just stay in place, or was there some type of reversal?
Yeah, we continue to follow those and monitor those to see if the circumstances have changed.
Thank you.
Yes. So I am pleased that, you know, we do have that Pennsylvania State Supreme Court decision because the methodology that we use is the exact same methodology that Wilson School District and Berks County use. So if there would have been an adverse ruling in that case, that we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be having this conversation tonight about district-initiated appeals. But once again, it's been time and time again, the courts have upheld this methodology for district-initiated appeals. And it only stands to reason that if the property owner can file an assessment appeal, to have a level playing field, why can't the taxing body also file an assessment appeal? So our mission here and our objective is equity. So we are asking for placement for the June 22 agenda. We will have a final list at that point in time when those 29 properties are fully vetted to see what the circumstances surrounding the sale were.
All right. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Stoll, and seconded by Dr. Lewis Campbell. Any other questions for Mr. Skoraki? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right. Thank you. The last item we have for the June 22 action meeting, this is an annual approval we do. We call it the Business Office Operational Items. Many times, we canceled the July Finance Committee meeting. In previous years, sometimes we've canceled the August meeting. This resolution basically gives us the authorization to move forward with things like bids, RFPs, purchase orders, awarding of bids, providing we give the committee a three-day notice if we're going to award any bids, to do any final journal entries required as part of the audit. Always come back and have board ratification of those items, but in-between meetings allows us basically to continue our summer operations in the business office. Of course, the items that we're talking about here have to be included in the 2324 budget. They can't be like something that just pops up. That would have to be discussed with the committee first. But for these items, again, based on the nature of some of the summer meetings, this allows us to continue with our operations in implementing the new fiscal year budget.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Stoll, and seconded by Mr. Casa. Any questions for Mr. Skoraki? This is a fairly typical practice, correct, Mr. Skoraki?
Yes.
All right. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
So, Mr. Skoraki, so, I mean, I know we did this last year, and I understand it's an annual occurrence to help keep operations moving smoothly and on time. So regarding, the only hiccup I sort of have is regarding anything associated with the high school and some of the bigger ticket items that are on the capital project list. I mean, they're on the list. If they become a higher priority because of failures, I just question that. I don't, I don't know. Can there be exceptions? I don't know if any other board members think about this, or?
So I'm thinking of a circumstance where it's, if something is not budgeted or planned through the capital improvement list, let's say there's a, I don't know, a generator failure, or a boiler failure, failure, or chiller failure that needs immediate attention and so forth. You know, many times, like, we have to ascertain, is this something we need to bid? What we would do in that particular case, if it was a bid situation, is we would go ahead and advertise the bid and get ratification for that after the fact. Based on the timeline with, you know, advertising for three weeks, and the opening of bids, and vetting the bids and so forth, we would be at a point where we would be at a board meeting where the board could take official action, because it's such a protracted timeline. So if we had to do a bid, I think we're covered. I think the situation where it could potentially be problematic, and perhaps then we need to have a finance meeting or call a special meeting, is if it would be like an emergency repair where we don't have time to bid it, where we might be going off of state contract or something like that, where we would want board authorization because it's not included as part of the general fund budget. I think in that particular case, we'd call a special meeting, or we have it.
We could take it up at work session, possibly.
Or we could do it at work session, or an action meeting, just have it as part of an action meeting and embed some discussion at an action meeting. But at this point in time, I think we're, at least on our radar right now, we are planning on canceling the July Finance Committee meeting. But we are planning on having the July action meeting, the August work session, and the August action meeting. So I think with timing, I think we have enough meetings in there that if an emergency would pop up, would really be from June 22, our action meeting, to July, I think it's the 18th or something like that for the July action meeting. That's really the period of time that's, we run into the most jeopardy, that four-week period. But if we need to, we'll call a special meeting.
Okay, thank you. I'm just concerned about the money regarding the capital projects and us being able to perform, execute what we want to do. So I'm kind of.
I mean, we don't really actually authorize the spending of the money till action anyway, right? So.
Right.
Yeah, it doesn't have to necessarily be taken up in this forum. You know, by passing this resolution, it doesn't preclude us from addressing it.
I'm just thinking about when we look at the bids, or sometimes we have questions about that. And if, just a little bit of a pause there for me. So, okay, that sounds good, but that's good.
Yeah, I think we are planning on having the June, July, and August Facilities and Operations Committee. So that would be another venue where if there would be an issue that would arise can be discussed there. That wouldn't be the entire committee that we have here with finance, but at least there can be some discussion with the four members of that committee.
Any other questions? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries.
All right. First time we have for information, Dr. Bauer's unable to join us tonight, so I'm going to lead the discussion about the referendum, specifically the timing of the referendum. This has been discussed as, with our community meetings and so forth. This is part of the high school project option one, specifically for the ninth grade addition, roughly $95 million. That's what the referendum vote was scheduled to be for. So you might recall, in our community meetings, we discussed the possibility of when that referendum would occur, when that vote would occur. And there's a couple possible dates we mentioned. You know, it could be at a general election. It could be at a special election. It could be at a primary election. But just mapping things out, the primary election in Pennsylvania right now is scheduled for April 23 of 2024. There's been a lot of discussion about the possibility of moving that to March for a couple reasons. Number one, I think that is the week of Passover, April 23. I think Passover starts the preceding day on April 22. And secondly, I think there's a school of thought that by the time the primaries come around in Pennsylvania, in particular in a presidential election year, that it's pretty much decided already by the time things roll around to Pennsylvania. So I think there's a twofold reason why there's been some movement to move up the primary in Pennsylvania to that March 19 date. So nothing has happened yet. It's been discussed. Quite frankly, I don't know if any proposed legislation has been officially introduced yet, but that's a possibility. We will not be ready for the November general election, because we are, we just engaged Schrader Architect Group officially to start the design development, schematic design for the high school project. We don't have a design. All the estimates to date have been square footage estimates. They have not been design estimates. So we are now mobilizing the architect and engineer. We have biweekly meetings with them. They will not be prepared for full estimates, final estimates, like in September, which we would need them by to have everything queued up for a referendum question in November. So November simply won't work from a timing perspective. So we also discussed at the community meeting about the possibility of a special election. And we thought, well, when's the earliest? Because we want, we want to expedite this project now, because we know any continued delays will result in escalated construction costs. We've seen that. We've seen that from the estimates that we had just a few short years ago, what had happened to the estimates from three years ago, and where they're at now. So we were considering a special election, and we kind of threw out a date of January 9 as a possibility. That's the second Tuesday in January. So we had Mr. Summers contact the Montgomery Board of Election, because when you conduct a special election, the school district would need to bear the cost of that special election. And I was involved with a special election in Upper Marionian Area School District. When I was there in 2011, they did a referendum for an elementary school that failed by 152 votes. It was a special election. It was also in January. The total cost for that special election was about $20,000. So we did some just quick back-of-the-envelope estimate. How many precincts does Upper Marionian have? How many precincts does North Penn have? And we came up with a figure, before we got the number from the Board of Election, we came up with a figure of like $80,000, $90,000. Okay, you know, not taking into account inflation, but just taking into account the number of precincts. We have 47 precincts here in North Penn School District. So $80,000, $90,000 was our estimate before we got the estimate from the Board of Election. Well, there's a couple of things that have changed, though, that have really changed the price. So I'll cut to the chase and let you know what the estimate is that we got from the Board of Election that Mr. Summers received. It's $319,000. And the key difference is, is the printing of the ballots. There were no printing of ballots back in 2011. So the printing of ballots alone is $164,000 for a special election. So that's the one substantial difference that exists today in 2023 that didn't exist back in 2011. And there's a number of other items that are on this list, but that's the primary item that's driving up the cost. So that begs the question, of course, and that's the conversation we want to have today, as a starting point. We're not asking for any decisions tonight, but we need to, you know, make a decision at some point within the next couple of months. You know, what's our target going to be? Is it going to be a special election, knowing that there's going to be a cost associated to it, much more than, you know, just that precinct comparison estimate that we had done? Or do we wait until the primary? The primary could be in April, could be in March. If it's in March, it's 10 weeks from the January date. If it's in April, it's 15 weeks from the special election date. So that's, that's the discussion. That's the dilemma, if you will. What date is the right date to have? So it really boils down to, is it a special election, or is it at the primaries? I don't think waiting until November 2024 general election, that's too long of a delay. That's just really, it's not necessary. We will be ready for January. We will be ready for March. We will be ready for April. But we'll need to know in the next month or so, I would say, because that will dictate how quickly, how fast, how much of an expedited process our architect will follow. Obviously, if we're looking at March or April, they can work more methodically than if we're going to have the special election in January. But either way, we'll be ready. No question about that.
So we just voted to approve an RFP for a consultant for this.
Yes.
So what is the, where are we at? Can you give us an update on that process? Because I thought that perhaps this would be part of that discussion with that professional.
And it can be. So this week, we officially published the construction management RFP, and we're targeting next week to publish the referendum consultant RFP. And our plan for the referendum consultant is to have that approved at the July action meeting, have a firm approve the July action meeting. So that can be part of it. In fact, that's part of the language that I put in the RFP about, you know, recommendations regarding timing of a referendum as part of the analysis and their expertise. And because our ultimate goal is we want informed voters to vote on this issue. And because our ultimate goal is we want informed voters to vote on this issue. And our speculation, you know, perhaps the consultant might think differently, but our speculation was that if you are coming to a special election where there's a singular item on that election, presumably, again, this is our thought process, that an individual that's going to come out and cast a vote on that day is going to be an informed voter. Whereas at the primary, a person might not necessarily know anything about the referendum and just cast a vote without any kind of information. But again, I we're most interested to hear what a referendum consultant has to say about that.
Having just gone through that Home Rule vote, that referendum, the state provided the language for the the vote itself. And it was wonky and complicated and hard to understand. Should we anticipate that the state is going to direct exactly like a formula almost of how to formulate the question itself?
They do.
Going about.
They do, yep. And we shared what that sample would look like at the community meetings, and it's really one sentence. It says something like, shall debt in the amount of $95 million to fund additions at the North Penn High School be incurred as electoral debt by the voters? Something, I'm paraphrasing, but it's something like that. There's only two parts of that sentence you can change. The amount, which could change. And we have that $95 million square foot estimate, that number will change based on the architect's engineered estimates. And the second part is insert the name of the project. Those are the only two things that can change. Everything else, that's it. There's no like, you can't embellish, you can't have further explanation. Now, you can have information at the polls. You can, you know, we would need to get approval from the from the Board of Election about that. But do you have a possibility of having like a, like an infographic or a one-page, a white paper or something like that explaining a little bit more? But when you're actually casting the vote, that's prescribed. There's no deviation except for the dollar amount in the project.
Yeah, when I think about the work that Tal Menzenknope did to inform simply the voters of Tal Menzenknope about the issue itself, because again, that was a particularly wonky issue. But I believe in a special election, when it is the only only option to vote on, that it would provide more space for an opportunity to explain what that actually means. Because nowhere did I hear you say the word ninth grade center, right? In that, so, you know, to understand that it's not just to be able to tax the community at a higher level, but, you know, to have those, the general understanding of what the intention for the money is, you know, what the bigger scope is. And I could see the relevance of that being done in a special election. But we're going to hold off on that broader discussion, you said, though, until Dr. Bowers?
We'll have, we'll have more discussion, yes. So, you know, there's, there's, there's naturally a dilemma here. I mean, it's the elephant in the room. I mean, it's, on one hand, if your objective is to have informed, educated voters casting a vote, that comes with a price. A price that, quite frankly, we were shocked when Mr. Summers got the number from the Board of Election. We were shocked. And that's Montgomery County. We don't have a number yet for Bucks County because we do have a number of properties in Bucks County. Have a small number, 72 or something like that. But nonetheless, the ballot question would have to be in Bucks County also, so there'll be an additional cost in Bucks County. Certainly won't be anything like $319,000, but, you know, there will be a cost there. So how do you balance that? Because, you know, $319,000 is a lot of money. How do you balance that against having it at the primary, but having, again, I'm speculating, but you could have individuals that don't have the same knowledge as those that are coming to vote on one singular issue.
Mr. Skorki, I appreciate what you're saying about having informed voters because that's paramount. But if we don't do it in January to the cost of this $319,000, if we wait till April or met March or April, forget the dates in here, do you anticipate that the cost for the project would actually end up going up, that $300,000?
That's tough to say. I mean, you.
Because.
If they, if the legislature. Yeah, if the legislature keeps the primary in April, 15 weeks, I mean, that's, that's quite a bit of time. And and time is of the essence. It's hard to say. If you're saying construction inflation is 8% a year and you're waiting three months, if you take, you know, three twelfths of the year and, you know, it's a quarter, a quarter of of eight is 2%. So you could say just by using the averages that theoretically waiting an extra three months could cost you an extra 2%. Now, again, that's theoretical. Like, no one will ever know the answer to that question. Because you would almost have to do this hypothetical bid in, you know, 15 weeks earlier under one scenario and 15 weeks later. We'll never know the answer to that. But really, if you if you just go by construction inflation, like, it almost seems like, you know, in some respect, you ever see those national debt counters that's continually going up? I mean, construction inflation, like, every day, every hour, every week, every month, it's going higher. You know, unless unless we dip into recession and you have construction materials and and the cost of labor start contracting. I mean, it's it's kind of an irony, but one of the things that will help the cost of this project is a recession. I don't think anyone wants a recession, but I don't think there's any question that will help the cost of this project. Especially if we're out to bid in the midst of a nice recession. I'm not wishing for a nice recession, but I know it will help the bid numbers, there's no question.
You said we need to make this decision, or you think we need to make this decision in a month?
And I'd say in the next month or two, Mr. Rush. I I would think by like August. We want to have an initial discussion tonight to to illustrate the advantages, the disadvantages. So full disclosure on the cost at this point in time. We'd like to get that consultant onboard and then probably no later than August.
And what's driving that date? Because like a few of my board members said, we have the architecture out doing work now who would give us a better idea of what we're asking for. We have the consultant coming in who hasn't even been hired yet. Do we have an idea when the county needs to know so so that they can fulfill their obligation?
Yeah, we we do, Mr. Rush. In fact, our plan was if if this does end up occurring in January as a special election, that we would like the board to pass the resolution authorizing the referendum and the ballot question in October. So the architects and engineers would be working towards an engineered estimate for that October Action Meeting. The county has told us they want as much advance notice as possible. By law, they need 45 days, but they would like more than that if possible.
Thank you.
So you've kind of helped us work back a little bit with some of the dates and things like that. So if our goal is to really make sure that we're getting that informed voter ready, whether it is in January, March or April, what would be our projected timeline and other activities that we might do once we'd get some of those formal numbers from the architect? So are we going to, will we do another community forum? What are we, obviously, we have the website.
Yes.
What are other things that we will do to get them ready? And will we have enough time to get them ready if we were to do January? Would having that extra time to March help?
No, we'll, we'll be ready. We don't, we have, we have not identified the specific steps yet that we're going to take, hence the referendum consultant. We know we're going to be doing more community meetings. I mean, that's, that's a given, there's no question about it. But smaller group meetings, like individual coffee meetings, like, like Dr. Bauer has now with the community. Maybe there's more of those that, you know, we, Dr. Waters can corroborate this. We talked in cabinet, that everyone on the superintendent's cabinet needs to be fully up to speed with this project. Because I can envision every member on cabinet going out and doing some of these small group meetings as opposed to, you know, a 300 or 400 community forum. Having those smaller meetings where you can spend more time talking about the nature of the project, spend more time talking about the finances, kind of like divide and conquer. I I can envision, we ask board members to do the same thing. You know, we talked before, that board and administration need to to be hand in hand with this project to make sure we have an informed community so someone can cast their vote with all the information. But in terms of, in October, we're doing this, November, we're doing this, that has not been articulated yet. That's going to be one of the major objectives for the referendum consultant, to kind of outline the plan for us moving forward, how we're going to conduct that. Obviously, there are some benefits to more time. More time means, you know, more opportunities for additional education, there's no question about that. So put that in the the advantage column of waiting until the primary. You know, more opportunities for community discussion. That definitely is advantage. But either way, we we are are fully committed, all hands on deck, to make sure that if it is in January, that we've had sufficient conversation with the community so the community members can make that informed vote. So in the meantime, between now and the time the referendum consultant comes onboard, we'll have, you know, we can have further discussion. If you think of anything in particular that will help enhance this discussion, you know, perhaps we have a discussion at FNO about this topic at the next finance meeting. But again, just timeline-wise, probably we need some direction by that August Action Meeting. Which direction, which path we're going to take. Because the time from August to October to actually approve the referendum question, that's not, not a lot of time. That's why we don't think waiting until September or October to make that decision, that's too late. It probably needs to occur in August.
Is it possible that we can do it in July? And the only reason I say.
We can, we can.
Because August, you're getting ready for school again. So it gives you the luxury, the the luxury of having a bit more time to think about it as opposed to all the other administrative things that need to happen. I don't know, is it possible?
The one downside to that is then that will be in the absence of a referendum consultant. So you could do that because the consultant won't be hired until the July Action Meeting. So we can, we can, you know, we have information from other districts that have gone through this. So we know the advantages and disadvantages. So you can base a decision based on all that collective information or you can wait for guidance from the referendum consultant. I mean, that's certainly the board's decision. So it could be at July, could be at August. If it's in August, you have that additional month to have some guidance and recommendation from the referendum consultant. So again, in the state of Pennsylvania, there's only been two successful referenda. Both were for high school projects. One was via a special election. That was Upper Dublin Area School District, that was for a high school project. And State College Area School District, that was done during a general election. So only two successful, one did it special, one did it general.
When you say general, do you know if it was primary or or in November?
I believe it was general November.
Okay.
For the state college one. And I think if you, you know, we've already spoken to some individuals that were involved with the Upper Dublin project, if you speak to them, they would say, oh, special election, it was, our community knew what, you know, they were, they, when they came to vote, they knew what they were voting on. Not just someone casting a yes or no and not knowing anything about the project. Then you talk, we, I have talked to state college. They said they felt that they had enough community engagement that they felt comfortable, that the people voting knew about the project. So just two schools of thought. That's, that's why it's kind of like a tug of war between the two. Okay, so that was for informational purposes only, so we know what the Montgomery County estimate is. One thing I've asked Mr. Summers to follow up on, presumably, if we have it at the primary, presumably, there's no cost, no additional cost for North Penn School District. Because, you know, they, they're manning, they're staffing, they're poll workers at each location anyway. So why would we pay for that? There's an election regardless. The same way with the ballot printing, they're doing ballot printing regardless. So, but I just want to make sure that our thought is accurate, that if it's in the primary, there really is no cost. I mean, obviously, if the Board of Election comes back and says, well, no, if you're going to put on a separate question on the ballot, there's another $50,000 cost, even though it's at the primary, then obviously that delta between the special election and the primary shrinks. And perhaps that can affect the decision-making. But I've asked Mr. Summers to to look into that through their solicitor. Okay, the last item we have, or informational items. Lauren, do you have an update for us tonight?
Good evening, everyone. I just have a quick update on the AP exam bill as I was talking to Mr. McFame before the meeting started. Unfortunately, I do think that the bill is going to get pushed back, so we won't be able to implement it in the upcoming school year. But we are hopeful that we'll be able to implement it in the 2425 school year. Other than that, I know that I'm working with the new treasurer of student government at North Penn to expand this even further. And I know that I talked at the December meeting or January meeting, I believe, about possibly finding funding for ACTs or ACTs or those hidden college fees that oftentimes don't get talked about. But they do take a toll on a lot of families. So possibly finding funding for that. And then also just spreading more information regarding the free and reduced lunch program, targeted more specifically towards the ESL students and families who may not be able to speak English. As of right now, I believe that is about like 6% of the school district, so that's a little over 700 students, which means that's over 700 families, which could be eligible for these really good programs that offer you two free SATs and do waive that college fee. But they just don't know about it because they are unable to understand and fully be involved in their child's education. Other than that, this is my last Finance Committee serving as a student representative this year. It has been an honor and I just want to thank all of you for this amazing opportunity. And I am very happy to say that I will be serving as a student representative on the ECI Committee next year. Thank you.
I think we all appreciate the contributions that you've brought to this group. You surprised a lot of people back on this side of the table and, I believe, in the audience. But I don't have to say goodbye because I'm also on ECI, so I'll look forward to working with you in the fall. But great work on this group, thank you.
I had a question for Lauren. I noticed in Principal Hassler's last email, if Principal Hassler's out there, I read the emails. I understand because I put those emails together, so I do read the emails. I noticed that there was a a banner in there that came, that, I don't know if it came from Food Services or Mr. Hassler put that together himself. But I don't know if you noticed, it was in his Smore and it had a QR code. And I was like, oh, there's a QR code in here that you can actually scan it with your phone to fill out. And I hadn't seen that before, so I was wondering, I was like, oh, in my mind, I thought, did Lauren have something to do with that? So I was just wondering if you had met with Mr. Hassler? Because Smore does, is the one app that does translate, which is why I know a lot of our schools have started to use it. But I was curious if that came from Food Services, if it was a Principal Hassler thing or a Lauren thing?
Unfortunately, it was not a Lauren thing. I will not be taking credit for it. But I also do know that Mr. Hassler and I have met several times regarding certain groups that may be overlooked and I have talked to him one-on-one. So we are definitely working together to try to increase outreach as well.
I thought that was quite clever, Mr. Hassler. I don't know if it came from Food Services, so if it's Melissa, then. But in my mind, I thought, oh, we should be sending it out that way in all of our schools because it made it so easy to just like be able to scan it with your phone. And I, regardless of the language that I speak, I should be able to read the Smore because you can just click translate and it translates into hundreds of different languages. So maybe we could look at sending just that out using Smore to just ESL families if we needed to? Like, just to, again, kind of start to make sure? Because, you know, sometimes it gets lost in the whole newsletter. Because not everybody reads them as thoroughly as I do.
Just because you also brought up kind of a partnership with English, English language learner families. I just want to also point out that there was a great event that Dr. Waters' team pulled together for, and it was an English language learner family night. And I, because it's held at the high school, there might be a fun opportunity moving forward to be able to engage high school students in that and make, yeah. So there's lots of, it was such a great foundational event that there's just so much opportunity to keep it growing. So it might be fun to have you involved in that.
All right. For information, all the financial reports are posted in board docs. So I alluded to earlier this evening about we do anticipate a budget surplus this year and our recommendation would be to pre-fund the high school construction project with some of that surplus. And I believe that is it, Mr. Fusco. I think we're on to public comment now, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Skoraki. All right. Individuals attending this meeting and intending to speak to the committee should be aware that they are being recorded. In order to meet the requirements of Pennsylvania Sunshine Law, it is necessary to record the names of all citizens who speak to the committee during the meeting. To ensure compliance with this requirement, it is essential that those planning to address the committee state their name and municipality. As a reminder, the public comment portion of the meeting is designed for residents and taxpayers of the district to provide com- of the district to provide comment and feedback on matters being discussed at tonight's meeting, on matters that may come before the finance committee. It is not designed for debate or discussion with members of the committee. When appropriate, committee members may choose to respond to public comments that have not been made or request that a member of the administration follow up with the speakers after the meeting. Members of the audience are asked to limit their questions and comments to three minutes. Now, we have one of these unusual circumstances tonight where this public comment is backing up to a public comment at our next meeting, which is scheduled immediately after this one. And it actually is at the beginning of that meeting. So, we do have a list of people who signed up. Technically, you signed up for the work session meeting, but I don't see why we couldn't just use the list at this point. So. Yes, yeah, you can comment twice. But I'm just saying, we're going to go with the people who called in first to start.
Some people here.
Yeah, people here. I did see that Kathy Heath was here and she is the first on our list if she would like to go ahead.
I have a question. So, this is, this public comment is just for the finance.
So, there will be two, yeah. So, we're going to public comment for this. And when this meeting is done, then we'll start the next meeting. And there is a second opportunity for public comments. So, obviously, you can, you can give both.
But I'll get to talk even though I didn't sign up.
Yes, yeah, we're just going to start with the folks.
It's Mrs. Heath's first, then Mr. Altieri, and then Mrs. Chapman.
Kathy Heath, Evergreen Township. All right. First off, when determining the number of classes for elementary grades next year, please start looking at what the students that make up those classes. Because quite honestly, my child is in one class where over a third of the kids are special education in one way or the other. And one-third is a lot. All right. We need to, while the numbers dictate two classes, the needs are getting in the way a lot of times of the education. You need to actually start looking at helping to make sure the students thrive in the school district, not merely survive. Also, start protecting the victims of bullying in the district. After the school was notified of being bullied repeatedly, a victim was forced to sit next to the bully in the cafeteria and on another occasion, forced to work in a group in the classroom with the bully. The school was contacted after each incident. But honestly, one contact with the school should have been more than enough. Prior to COVID, parents were welcome at assemblies at the elementary level. This allows us to support our children during these assemblies when they were performing. Some of your elementary kids do not perform well in the evening. They perform better in the morning and some vice versa. Some have anxiety issues that pop up and so they might not be at their best at one performance versus another. Like I said, prior to COVID, we were allowed in the buildings to support our children and we no longer are. It's only right and fair that we get to see them perform, especially with the amount of sacrifice these families make getting our kids involved and doing all that. Excluding the parents is detrimental to the students, the families, and ultimately, the school district because it does not, it does the opposite of fostering a feeling of collaboration. All right. And finally, post 12, I have contacted you guys. The message that was sent to my son and his peers that, yes, they're part of the high school, but they're not in the yearbook under the student body. I have, I've been in contact and I appreciate the fact that you, that everybody is working to rectify the situation. However, no one has ever contacted my child to explain to him why they were excluded. And I find that totally unacceptable.
This is Heath. I just wanted to say to you, again, just extending our deepest apologies to you and your son. There's no excuse. And I know Dr. Bauer and Mr. Hassler have been working really closely with the yearbook company directly to kind of rectify the situation.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Altieri, you signed up next.
Good evening. Vince Altieri, Lansdale, Pennsylvania. I'd like to get to three points tonight. At the last meeting, I had asked about specific board members to put out, put out there for the group to vote on this three-minute limit that you've imposed on parents and taxpayers. I received an answer from Mr. Summers later at the meeting, but I didn't ask the question of Mr. Summers because Mr. Summers wasn't the individual that stood exactly here and was given the, given the opportunity to speak for more than three minutes. So, I find that, I find that response from him a bit disingenuous. And his response also went on to talk about how he compared North Penn School Districts, I'll just call it a rule for a lack of better term, to other school districts. Well, you can compare and contrast when you want to compare. I mean, North Penn School District has a way of doing things. North Penn School District didn't factor in what other school districts did to deal with the pandemic. They went out and did that on their own. So, I think it's unfair to pick and choose when somebody wants to compare themselves to another school district. So, I'll ask again, you know, Mr. Fusco, Ms. Kasa, put it out there. Let the board members vote on it. I'm not asking for unlimited amount of time. I'm asking for a reasonable amount of time. So, parents that get up here that aren't as comfortable speaking in public, and let's face it, we're all not. I'm not at all, you know, to be perfectly honest with you. Don't make them feel rushed. Just treat them like human beings and taxpayers and give them the same opportunity that the both of you had when you were sitting in the same spot. I want to find out about volunteer firefighter and police tax refund. And if I miss this, I'll be the first to put my hand up and say, I apologize. I missed, I missed, I missed it when it was covered. I read an article that Neshamity Valley, how much time do I have left? Nesham, thank you. Nesham, Neshamity Valley pushed out, took advantage of this, okay? And I haven't heard anything from North Penn School District. So, I'd like to learn more about that from this board. And if I missed it, I'll say it again. When I make a mistake, I apologize too. Because I just show hope this isn't timing. And we aren't going to push this out when it's convenient and for others, nice to see. So, I'm going to, I'm going to hope and pray that I'm completely wrong about that. But I'd like to hear more from this. And then lastly, in terms of, in terms of the referendum, I don't really care when the referendum is voted. I know my opinion doesn't matter when it comes to your decision. It's just irresponsible to call this a 90-some-odd million-dollar referendum when during the same presentation, you said you can't have one without the other. It's, it's a much more than a 90-something million-dollar project. Okay, conservatively speaking, I've tossed out the number a billion and I haven't heard anyone say that I'm out of my mind. So, I don't, I don't appreciate that. Tell the truth about what it's going to cost the taxpayers. Thank you.
Mrs. Chapman.
Mrs. Chapman, you're the next on our list if you're in the audience. Nope, all right. Well, at this point, I don't know if you didn't hear me, Mrs. Chapman, are you here? Is there a Mrs. Chapman? On that point, then anybody at this point is welcome to come up. That was our list.
Jason Lanier, Lansdale. Kind of want to left off where Vince did, or start off where Vince left off. But prior to that, last meeting, I asked you guys, back in 2018, when the cost for renovation of the high school was $100 million plus $30 million in soft cost. And now, we're at $184 million. That, that's a huge increase in just a few years. I understand inflation, but that, that's way beyond the cost of inflation. So, whatever those expedited costs are, somewhere the, we're either building a bigger or doing more square footage renovation or the cost has gone up way beyond what's expected in inflation. That being said, what Vince is saying is exactly true. The referendum for $95 million is no way, no way reflective of the cost of this project. This project, as Vince is also saying, is that they're tied together, meaning the 21st century school building adds another $106 million to the project cost. So, A, B, option A and B. One option is just renovating the high school. That's flat. That's, there's still a differential in time from 2018 to now, but going off of today's number, that's $180 million. If we add in the ninth grade center for $94 million, we are now paying $200 million more just in cost, not in debt load. Debt load is over $1 billion. I'm talking just in cost alone. How can you explain how you can say a referendum for $95 million when it's actually going to cost $200 million? Or has there been some way to separate the 21st century building addition to, from the, the cost to renovate the high school just to bring it up to standards? Because I haven't, I've been to all these meetings and there has never been a discussion about that. It's either renovate the building or do this whole thing. This whole thing is $400 million in current cost based upon square footage, billion dollars in debt load. But then you guys are asking for, saying, but it's only going to cost $95 million more. And that's just not the case. That is deceptive advertising. You, you need to square that language because anybody who votes for it needs to know that they're actually voting not for $95 million, they're voting for $200 million. And I have all the numbers off of your website to show this. If you need me to explain it to you, I will, happy to do it. Thank you.
Pauline Brachio-Dominant Township. When you're figuring out, Mr. Skoraki, when you're figuring out when to have that referendum question, isn't there a way to know when they're going to actually solidify that primary date? Because that would make it easier for your decision. If it's absolutely going to be March 19th, that gives you a little, you know, more breathing room than April. Because, you know, as you said, four or five more weeks would raise the cost. And as far as, I hate to say this, I'm a poll worker and I see people coming in to vote. And it really doesn't matter if it's the primary or the general, if there's a referendum question, they always don't know what it's about. Most of them, it's really bad. So, I don't know. Good luck to you to get that information out. As far as the $319,000 that the election board wants to charge you, and that's $164,000 is because of mail-in ballots. Why don't, instead of using paper ballots, because they do have those machines that people who can't, can't do a paper ballot, where they actually punch it in and then it prints it out right there and then they put it through the scanner, perhaps that could be an option instead of having that printed ballot just for one question. So, I, I'm just like thinking these things as you're talking and I thought, you know, it's just my two cents. And Christian, for you, does it make you feel any better that the, if the sewer gets sold, that the school district will get more money?
No, because that would still generate more cost to be passed on to the residents of Towns end itself. So, no, as a resident of Towns.
Wait, we don't take up my time here. No, wait a minute. So, if come July, whatever it is, and Homel takes over and you guys want to stop the sale of the sewer, you know that's going to be legal cost involved in that as well. So, it's kind of like offsetting.
I will defer a couple of seconds, but this is not a school district issue. Even if I did bring it up, I did bring it up to the budget itself. I'll happily talk with you about it afterwards because I can talk about this all day long.
Yeah. No, that's okay. I just, I just wanted to bring up those couple of points when you're figuring it out. And if it's by law, you have to only give them 45 days. Then my other question is, why do you have to give it to them by August if you don't really have to give it to them until mid-November? Because, you know, again, that's still more education time for the residents. So, I, I don't know. I just, you know, I know that the Board of Elections, they can be a bully, you know. I could talk to you privately about that. But anyway, that's what I was thinking, is you do have room to wiggle there. And I hope that you take advantage of that room. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to give public comment?
Diana Blystone-Tomason. If any of your children receive occupational or physical therapy, you will know that this is a crucial part of our children's education. Switching from Ostiles and moving to PTS should not be made lightly. The community deserves a valid reason for switching other than to save a few dollars. Consistency and meaningful relationships are important for our children and you need to have a valid reason for this change. Quality of service protects the district from lawsuits and legal fees. The online reviews are discouraging. 17% of the student population are special education students and they are the most vulnerable population in your community. I truly hope that all of you will not use our children as political pawns and cloud your judgment that things are just fine because they're not. If you care, listen to teachers, staff, parents, and students and let's actually affect change regardless of November. Our children do not get a second chance. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to give public comment at this time? There's going to be another opportunity. Yep. Okay. Quick follow-up. Anyone else?
Chair. May I have a quick follow-up for Dr. Waters?
Yes, go ahead.
I just wanted to, to make sure with some of those questions and points that were brought up. In terms of Ms. Heath and the assemblies, is that something that we can make sure there's some contact so that can be worked out?
Yeah, absolutely. I was a little bit honestly surprised to hear that. And I don't know which elementary school that you're referring to, but I'm certainly going to look into that because I've been to many schools that have been welcoming parents back since the pandemic. So, we will look into that and get back to you.
And that's, appreciate you bringing that up. And I would just add to that conversation, the bullying, to find out which school and so we make sure there's some, some follow-up on that. And just in terms of what Ms. Blystone had to, to mention, that the administration will have some follow-up about some of that rationale. I know we've had presentations as well, but I think that one-on-one type of conversation would be helpful. Thank you.
Anyone else? No. All right, just a review of the items recommended for action were the budget transfers, the CPAS trustee appointment, the 2324 final general fund budget, the homestead exclusion, the real estate tax assessment appeals, and the business office operational items. Our next finance committee meeting is scheduled for July 11th at 6:00 PM. But as we discussed earlier in the meeting, there's a likelihood that meeting may be canceled. Anything else? All right. Can I have a motion to join?
Send me.
All right. We will take a few minutes, give Mr. Gilmore a chance to get ready for the next meeting and then we'll be right back.